I noticed when they paved the streets, you see all these yellow flags on the left and right side. Shouldn't this come out of the paving plan?
Right. So that was one of the things I noticed. I went through, I went through month by month, and I looked at every address. And when I started seeing addresses that were the city of Utica's addresses, I wanted to know why our engineering department couldn't go into the field and do our own roads. I mean, we're the ones that have the maps. And so engineering department took a look at that, and they agreed. This was new for them, so they just didn't realize it. And so part of the cost reduction, we are anticipating that the cost of an outside contractor would be about $250,000 to $260,000 a year. That's why it's down to about $200,000. So we'll be doing some of them ourselves as it relates to paving and those things that are city-owned properties. Even when you take a stump out, when you hire a company to come in and take a stump out, you have to call 811.
Or if we plant a tree.
Yes, if you plant a tree.
The other thing is, United County Water Authority. A lot of the lines are due.
They come in and do their own.
They do their own, so that has nothing to do with it.
Nothing to do with us. They actually have three full-time employees, and they do their own.
We can't piggyback on the county?
Yes, we could.
It's actually through the water board, not the county. It's through the actual water board, and they have no interest in it either. We tried.
Did you try?
We did.
It'd be nice to give them a stipend, give them a little extra money.
We would love to do that. We met with them. We would love to do that. Part of the problem is, they then have to take our GIS and our maps and become very familiar with our sewer lines and now especially with our street lighting, our electric, as it relates to that. Because, I'll give you a great example. If it's an emergency, we have, I think we have four hours to get there, or we get fined. So if someone knocks out a streetlight tonight at midnight, this company comes out within four hours and marks those utilities, that electric because we own the streetlights. If it's not an emergency, we have 72 hours in which to do it. So we would have to be having our staff nights and weekends doing all of this work.
And this bid is on a yearly basis, or is this by the job?
By the year.
So it's covered for the whole year, no matter how many times they go out, this is the money?
No, they charge us per site.
So it could technically go way up?
Right. So if we go to, you're putting in a pool, and you don't have a streetlight in your backyard, which you're not going to, you're not going to be paying for us to, or the city will not be paying to map out the electrical. We're only going to be there to map out the sewer and the stormwater, which you could possibly have back there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, can you help me locate, it's a $60,000 difference? I just can't find the largest difference for year two.
Part of it has to do with the city expenses, the $40,000 there.
So are we looking at generally the $200,000 or $260,000?
The $201.
Still an estimate though.
Well, when we went through, we saw, why are we, when we know what our own mapping is for our sewer lines, and we're taking down one of our own trees, and we're calling 811? You know, and so when I went through and started looking at them, you know, I went back to engineering and said, why are we doing that? Why aren't, you saw, councilman, you saw the flags for paving. Why is that happening? And I just don't think that they communicated properly, and so they realized that we needed to stop that. So they just, they stopped that immediately, and there was a cost saved that was realized because of that.
Mr. Minority Leader?
Everybody good?
Any, yes. Is there anybody opposed to this?
All right, let's move it. That was number five, and number six.
Number six, number six has to to, uh, stand in our garages and, and open gates and, and collect fees. Uh, as you may recall, we received a, a grant which we're just about ready to implement. We've actually ordered the gates and the automatic pay stations. Um, so by the springtime, you will see that in all our garages and, and, and at various lots. Um, but at this point, we have, um, wages available, budget wages, to take out of there and put into engineering contracts.
We mentioned this at E and A, but did you bring up the liability factor as well?
Yes. So if we have our own employees that are out marking the utilities and they make a mistake, we are liable in total if, uh, a company comes in and digs and we've made a mistake and there's loss of life or a loss of property. If an outside agency does it, they, they hold the liability. So that was the other very large factor in recommending, uh, and staying with an outside contractor.
Yeah, just a question. When you, when you outsource it, does it go out to bid? Is there several people, several companies that are interested and you take low bid? Is that?
Yep. We actually, we put it out to RFP back in January, February, um, and there was only one respondent. Um, there aren't a lot, companies are having their troubles with hiring people. Right now, the average salary for someone to do this is about $100,000. Um, because we actually, Mike Mahoney actually approached the gentleman that are doing it and wanted to hire them, similar to what we did with Brad Faffley. Um, and so, um...
So let, let me ask you. I noticed when they paved the streets, you see all these yellow flags on the left and right side. Shouldn't this come out of the paving?
Right. So, so that was one of the things I noticed. I went through, I went through month by month and I looked at every address. And when I started seeing addresses that were the City of Utica's addresses, I wanted to know why our engineering department couldn't go into the field and do our own roads. I mean, we're the ones that have the maps. Um, and so engineering department took a look at that and they agreed. This was new for them, so they just didn't realize it. Um, and so part of the cost reduction, we are anticipating that the cost of an outside contractor would be about 250 to 260 a year. That's why it's down to about 200,000. So we'll be doing some of them ourselves as it relates to paving and those things that are, are city-owned properties. Even when you take a stump out, when you hire a company to come in and take a stump out, you have to call eight one one.
Or if we plant a tree.
Yes, if you plant a tree.
The other thing is, United County Water Authority, a lot of that lines are due.
They come in and do their own.
They do their own, so that has nothing to do with.
Nothing to do with it.
We don't get.
Yeah, they actually have three full-time employees and they do their own.
We can't piggyback on the county?
And we could, yes.
And it's actually through the water board, not the county. It's through the actual water board and they have no interest in it either. We tried.
Did you try?
We did.
It'd be nice to give them a stipend, give them a little extra money.
We would love to do that. We, we met with them. We would love to do that. Part of the problem is they, they then have to take our GIS and our maps and become very familiar with our sewer lines and now especially with our street lighting, our electric as it relates to that. Because, I'll give you a great example. If it's an emergency, we have, I think we have four hours to, to get there, we get fined. So if someone knocks out a streetlight tonight at midnight, this company comes out within four hours and marks, marks those utilities, that electric because we own the streetlights. If, if it's not an emergency, we have 72 hours in which to do it. Um, so we would have to be having our staff nights and weekends doing all of this work.
And this is, this bid is on a yearly basis or is this by the job as, as?
By the year.
So it's covered for the whole year, no matter how many times they go out, this is the money that?
Oh, they, no, they charge us per, 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 per site.
Per, so it could technically go way up?
Right. So if we go to, you're, you're putting in a pool and you don't have a streetlight in your backyard, which you're not going to, you're not going to be paying for us to, or the city will not be paying to map out the electrical. We're only going to be there to map out the sewer and the stormwater, which you could possibly have back there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, can you help me locate, um, this is, it's a $60,000 difference? I just can't find why it's different for year two.
It, part of it has to do with the city expenses, the 40,000 there, um...
So are we looking at generally the 200,000 or 260,000?
The 201.
Still an estimate though.
Yeah. Well, when we went through and we saw, why, why are we, when we know what our own mapping is for our sewer lines and we're taking down one of our own trees and we're, we're calling eight one one?
Right.
You know, and so when I went through and started looking at them, you know, I went back to engineering and said, why are we doing that? Why, why are, you saw, Councilman, you saw the flags for paving. Why is that happening? And I just don't think that they communicated properly and so they realized there was, we needed to stop that. So they just, they stopped that immediately and they, there was a cost statement realized because of that.
Mr. Minority Leader?
Everybody good?
Any, yes, is there anybody opposed to this?
All right, let's move it. That was number five and number six.
Uh, number six, number six has to do with seasonal employment. Um, historically, um, we have had a, a budget of about 80 to 85,000 dollars for seasonal employment for the parks departments. That's, that's hiring through express, um, and that's our part-timers. When we put the budget together last year, we really were unsure of whether we were even going to be able to hire part-timers or where, where it was going to go. Um, we had a, a very difficult time this year hiring part-timers, um, but when we could hire them, we, we, we did. People weren't showing up, didn't like the pay rate, we had to increase the pay rate. Um, but there was just so much, so many things to be done because last summer we didn't hire anyone, previous summer. So there was a lot of work that was being done just to keep up. And I think we were down one parks full-time person also. So this is really just getting the budget back to where it needed to be in the first place, but we had lowered it because we just didn't anticipate having that amount of...
Everybody good with number six?
Yes, sir.
All right, number seven, this, I don't know if we have a unanimous on this. I'm probably going to end up putting this in committee.
Can we put it in committee?
Okay. Number eight, uh, park rules regarding hours of operations trespassing in City of Utica ordinances. Any issues with this?
Weren't, I was, weren't we going to have a committee meeting about this?
I thought so.
Yeah.
We could, we could discuss it now. We've got a few minutes.
But didn't we say that the biggest thing that we were worrying about was the, I know Delvin, we wanted set hours or we were good with it, right?
I think, I think.
They came back with the set hours.
Right.
Am I wrong?
No, looks good to me.
Delvin or no?
That was the key, that was the tickler on this, right?
That was the tickler with the hours.
So they include the hours and the time of year, so we guys good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
So that's, everybody good?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, number eight is good. Number nine, ordinance established in a capital reserve fund or number eight or has your word?
I like to refer that to committee.
Yep. Number nine, committee?
Please, sir.
And number 10, please.
Number 10 in committee?
Yes, sir.
Can we put, can we put, uh, a, a specific committee on seven and nine because the committee of the whole tends to not meet?
Well, so before we even talk about that, uh, Minority Leader, can I have the floor for a moment?
Yep.
All right, because we just, we're just breezing over nine and 10 and saying we're going to put them in the committee. Um, have each of the council people reviewed those and understand, um, what we're doing there? Do you need a briefing from Board of E and A members, uh, from the Budget Director, et cetera? Or are those just already completely reviewed and the full council understands what's going on there?
Some of the council have met with the Budget Director and we had just had some questions, so we're good for another two weeks.
Okay, okay. So these will be considered on the 15th?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then.
Yes, that, that was the whole thing. We just had some unanswered questions. It was too late, didn't it?
And if the council wants, I can call finance meeting at, uh, next meeting at 5:30. It's up to the council. Guys good with that?
Yep.
Five o'clock, so I mean, we got time.
Five o'clock? That early? Okay, boys.
Yeah, I mean, what are you going to do in a half hour?
No problem. Finance meeting called for five o'clock.
So, hang on, just point of order. Um, Councilman Beatrice?
Yes.
There's two weeks in between now and the 15th, to which we can all ask questions on this, which is why they're suggesting 5:30 may be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay.
I just know how time flies, you know what I mean?
I know.
I have, I, I mean, I understand your point, Mr. President, but I understand Joe's point too.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Let's have an hour committee meeting.
Right.
Doesn't hurt us. We don't do very many committee meetings.
I'm sure we can find other subjects to talk about.
Well, well put, right.
All right, members of council, it's five o'clock.
Five o'clock, aye.
You just confirm that the clerk's office is going to?
I've got it, absolutely, yep.
Jack, Jack and myself may be a little late because I know we'll have a Harvard meeting there at four, but hopefully we're out in time and we'll be there.
So you want the meeting at five, just to be clear, but you might be late.
Yep.
So nine, 10?
Serious, no, I'm serious.
You know what you're saying, Joey.
Yes, we all agreed to five o'clock.
Okay, all right.
All right, so nine, 10, and seven, that's going in committee, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right, uh, let's see. There is no number on this one. Local law establishing a sustainable injur, injur, energy loan program?
Mr. Minority Leader, may I have the floor, please?
Yes, please.
Um, council members, there are two copies. Please disregard the copy that came in the package. Um, there's a copy with the, the numbers handwritten in, that is the, in its final form. As everybody knows, a local law has to sit on the table for seven days in its final form. So please disregard the one that you hit, received in the package and the one that was separate with a nice paper clip that David was so nice to supply to all of us.
Uh huh.
Um, that's the one that we're going to, um, entertain. Uh, that's in its final form. And if, uh, if there's opening for discussion, sir, please, if there's any questions.
I have lots of questions.
Yeah, I mean, we want to know what this is. If anyone can explain what this is.
That's why Jack's here.
Jack's here, yes.
All right, Jack, you got the floor, Jack.
So the, um, just a, a point of reference. So in the past, uh, I had brought this, um, uh, the case financing, uh, to this group a, a couple of years ago. But the way that the program was set up in the past was, uh, the municipality would, uh, receive the, uh, payments, the loan payments and, and hold them kind of as a tax. And then at certain times of the year, then they would be transferred out to the financing. The other, uh, the other caveat was that if someone defaulted on their payments, then the city was responsible for it. So that's why it was, it was based on a local law because it kind of, you know, had the city where, where it needed to or municipality. They, because of the, uh, I think a lack of interest in the program, they've relaxed that so that, uh, the lending agency does their own collecting. The city is not responsible, but because everybody had approved them in the past as a local law, then the, uh, they had to go back and change their local laws to now reflect that they weren't on the hook for anything.
We had this local law?
No, we, we did not pass it at the time. Right, because there was these, these little hooks in there and no one really, you know, we could understand it, that they only look at companies that are, uh, credit-worthy. They'll go through and, you know, the, the, just the same with the loan, they'll do their underwriting so that they're not going to be just giving it to, you know, Joe's Bodega versus, um, UCP or somebody that's got some real teeth that, that would repay the loan. Okay? So what it does is, uh, I don't know if you've read through it, but it is specific for, uh, energy projects. Uh, so it could be solar, geothermal, uh, any type of the heat pump. Um, so though, you know, wind of the power. Um, so what it does is it offers a, uh, an avenue for energy loans and, and funding.
Now, what I could not understand in this was if, if this was that the city becomes a pass-through or, uh, uh, uh...
A sponsor.
Or sponsor, or if, if we were, or if this outside, uh, Energy Improvement Corporation, or when I, when I Googled it, it looked like there was a statewide program or agency that was responsible for this and that maybe the city was like some sort of pass-through. So that's what I was confused about, how, how this program was.
The EIC is the, the Energy Improvement.
Yeah.
They are the, uh, overarching, uh, I would say manager, if you will. And then the municipalities, you know, kind of buy into the system again or, or sponsors.
And so the municipality decides what, what businesses gets this loan and what do not, right?
Correct, we have that in common.
And so, but we don't, but we don't control the definition of what type of businesses, uh, uh, qualify?
Well, there, you, you could be a not-for-profit, you could be a for-profit. Um, I was just talking to, uh, Celeste regarding residential. So if we were to look at, uh, say MHA or, uh, they're not Buck Properties anymore, but like Johnson Tower. Say they wanted to put some solar on there, um, perfect, then, uh, you know, they would petition for it. And then, you know, they would be responsible for their payment.
Let me give you another scenario. Let's say I'm a developer, for-profit.
And I do, and I do have someone that has approached me.
Sure.
Specific for this funding.
Let's say I'm a for-profit developer. And I want to come in and, and take a business and put a for-profit company there, uh, that's for, give us, let's say, a, um, let's say a law department or, or a fancy restaurant or something, right? I can petition the city.
Right.
And potentially be approved for this loan. By who?
Through the EIC and then the, the lending.
So the EIC would decide not necessarily the administration?
They'll, they'll, they're going to come to us and ask what, you know, what we think of them or, you know, what our experience has been, okay? And, and whether we think that they're worthy or not. But again, the lending institution, you know, will still go through their, their underwriting process. So they, so they're going to doubly make sure that, yes, the company does have the wherewithal to undertake this type of project, uh, whatever, based on whatever the terms are, how much funding they need, are they funding 100% of it? Because I don't...
But this is city money, though.
No.
It's nothing. That's why I don't understand why we're involved.
Yeah, why do?
Again, because originally, because of the local law that was required with the original program, other, other municipalities have now had to change their local law, so they're just keeping it as a local law. Because the, there's, there's predecessors, Troy, Amsterdam, Albany, Syracuse, so they've already passed this local law.
Okay, but...
So now, so now, now they had to go and change their local law. So, so the, the company is, or the EIC is still requiring that the municipalities, you know, basically are sponsoring this. And they've got some, some buy-in to it, but it's not any of our money. We, you know, they'll make their own collections, they'll...
So why do they?
Deal with their defaults, their, themselves.
But in the end of the day, we could say, we want to give you the money. The city wants to give you the money. They're giving the money, they could say they don't want to, or vice versa, correct?
If they're underwriting, you know, if they, if they go out to the business that he's looking at and, and, you know, through their underwriting, they say, no, we don't find that you're credit-worthy.
But they're not, but the city's not qualifying them. This company's qualifying them.
No, I think there is a provision where the city can, can give some input, but again, it's going to be based on the underwriting.
I, I have...
So it's a tool for us because if it offers better terms, uh, as I was explaining to Celeste, if you put a, you, you could spend $100,000 on a, uh, a geothermal system. But if the value of that is only, you know, once it's in and it only increases the value of the building by $50,000, I, I do bank because that's what I do, part of what I do here is for the city, is I underwrite loans.
Can the municipality do?
Perfect.
Can the municipality apply?
If they had, if they had a building that they wanted to...
If you wanted to put on a roof, you wanted to put solar panels on this roof.
Yeah, I, I would imagine so.
Can, I, I have a, a question that I think is sympathetic to Joe's question and Delvin's question. How does this, so let's say that you're somebody like me who really wants to facilitate and incentivize anybody to put up solar and put in geothermal and put in heat pumps and add conservation and do all that good stuff so that we can mitigate the crisis that we're staring down. How does this facilitate this? How does it make it more likely that the MHA or Buck Properties or the new owners of the Mayrow Building? How does this make it more likely that any of those entities will do all that? Like, this is, I don't understand why we're necessary.
Favorable terms, okay, the ability that someone will, uh, fund for these types of projects. So again, my example is, you spent $100,000, the bank is looking at it and says, well, it's only going to increase the value of your property by 50. They might not be willing to take that chance. This company, these, the EIC and the people that they deal with, the funding avenues, that's what they do. This is what they're looking for.
And, and so that leads me to another, I, I don't understand what the EIC is because it says on page two, this is in the definition.
Local Development Corporation.
The Energy Improvement Corporation, a local development corporate, a local development, who is that? The Local Development Corporation. Local?
That, I, I don't have an answer for.
So I don't understand who the EIC is, who they're composed of, who they answer to, where they sit, who, yeah.
Right.
So I got a, I got a question. So, you know, we laid this on the table, Mike, we laid this on the table, and we got...
You may lay it on the table, yes.
It can stay on the table for weeks. It doesn't make a difference. The thing is, we got two weeks to answer all the questions that you need privately because it's just going to keep on going, going, going. So let's just move this along. I mean, can we lay it on the table? It doesn't mean it's going to get approved or not. We can just lay it on the table. It can stay on the table for a year. It doesn't make a difference. But what I'm getting at, because you...
I, I like it a little bit sooner than a year, only because I have, I have a company out there.
Well, I know, but...
That's, that's looking to utilize. And again, I do, I, I...
No, Jack, that gives them time to, to have any questions because you got to have, you know, just go lay it on the table.
No, if you can, and then I, you know, if anybody has questions, I'll give my business card. Email me and I'll, you'll email, you know, back to everybody, so you just kind of put it out on the table.
But you would, you would have to lay on the table in its final form. We couldn't lay it on the table and then change it, then we would have to lay it back on the table.
So...
I don't think we need to change it.
May I have the floor for just a moment?
Go ahead.
Let's say you guys laid it on the table. Uh, Jack, um, you're going to have to just track everyone down and make sure that you can explain every little detail so that if you would like to see this considered on the 15th?
Yep.
That's your best chance.
I'll get everybody's email and I'll start an email chain and just have, you know, whatever your questions are, you ask, I'll get the answers. I'll throw them out to everybody else.
Okay, and that's, that's all there is, yeah, yes.
I agree with the council person from the third district.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to know who EIC is. Yeah, I read this thing and I, it looks all, I, I didn't like it the first time it came here because that was the one where we were...
I wasn't crazy about it either.
Actually, we were being the collector and responsible for the loan.
Right, exactly.
Which I thought was really ridiculous and I think the council didn't like it and that was an objection then. But even now, uh, EIC, I think, uh, before any other questions answered, I think that's the most important question, is who is EIC? Because if she asked me who EIC is, I don't know. I, I can't answer that question. So I didn't want to say anything until I heard what the councilmen, what the concerns were. And, uh, we talked today, did we not?
Yep.
Yeah. So I, I, I don't like to, uh, interpose my feelings when the council is the one who has to decide this. But from my point of view, because the councilman asked that question, councilperson rather, I think that question should be answered first. Who is EIC? And when I think we know that, then we start from that period.
No, it's, it's an agency out of New York, in New York City.
I would like to know if any other municipality adopted it and actually put the pro, program in, uh, uh, forward and what their, uh, what their findings were, in fact. I, I think that's important for them to make a decision. I know it's important for me to know.
If that's the question, I mean, I, you know, it, it's easy for me to reach out to, again, Troy, Amsterdam, Syracuse, you know, and, and find out what their experience has been.
Yeah, sure. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
But I would like...
Councilman Williamson, I also have one more point before I'm done. Um, the only other thing I wanted to put out there, well, one, I wasn't trying to push the council so you have to consider this on the 15th. I was just trying to explain to Mr. Spath that if there's any questions that need to be answered. Um, if this lays on the table, Councilman Williamson, um, the only catch to this is the reason it lays on the table of the council is so the council can review it. Um, once the new council takes place, it would not have been on the table of the two new council people coming in as of January 3rd.
Yeah.
So it would have to be technically reintroduced and lay on the table of the new council if it passes the year. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to say that this council needs to get it done by the end of the year. It's up to you what you do with it, but that is the case, okay?
So we got two options. You lay it on the table or put it in committee.
Can I, may I say something?
I'd just like to say that I'll do whatever I can to answer the questions, you know, so for the 15th.
Can, can I make a suggestion? Mr. Williamson, can I have the floor for a second?
Go ahead.
I, I'd like to suggest that what we do is retract this for this evening and early as possible in January, bring it back out. Get ourselves up a good committee meeting, have the various people, Jack will do the research on the questions that were already asked about the makeup of the EIC, but also the experience of other cities. And let's, let's get on this as early as possible in the next year, but I don't think it makes sense for this council to try to...
All right, Heather.
That, that would be my suggestion.
The EIC is a sub-agency of Nicerto. It's pretty easy.
It's what?
The EIC is a sub-agency for the, the purpose of what he's trying to do. What I'd like to do, what, what we should do, we can do a memo tomorrow outlining this. I just looked it up. It's, it's very, I mean, I, I apologize that we haven't done that, but what we'd like to do, um, from the mayor's administration is get you a memo on this because we do have a local business that would like to take advantage of this sooner rather than later. Um, it's, it's just that we should have, we should have done something in memo form. Yes.
We'll, we'll answer all the questions and get something out within the next couple of days.
And this, this, this does not cost the city money in any way.
It does not. It's an economic development tool.
Okay.
That, that the state requires a local law for the, the city to opt into.
And, and there's no way that through this, the administration can pick and choose who they give this?
Ultimate, the ultimate decision lies in the hands of the EIC.
Which is part of NYSERTA's study.
And again, I don't know.
Because they're, they're underwriting and they're, they're looking at it.
I'm sure with that, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't city money being loaned.
It is not.
All right, so, all right, let's, hey. Okay. Let's reorganize, let's reorganize, all right, so.
A motion to put it on the table for seven days and both neck.
All right, did anybody second that?
That's right.
Everybody good to go?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mike, would you read this, the lay it on the table? Would everybody okay with that when the time comes?
Later on, yeah, okay.
You'll, you'll do that, okay, Mike? Mr. President, all right. Number 11, repeal article zoning ordinance entitled supplemental regulations agricultural urban.
Um, are you reviewing the one that's with the memo or the one that's in the packet? The one in the packet needs to be thrown in the garbage.
Okay.
All right, so there's one that was handed out that is paper clipped to the memo, or I'm sorry, the resolution from the, uh, planning board.
Yes.
Which I will read the resolution in its entirety during the miscellaneous communications prior to this being in the order of business, just so you're aware. Um, but I mean, by all means, the meeting can't start till seven anyways.
Is still ordinance 11, though, the one that?
Yeah, the, the numbers are immaterial. That's just for the packet anyways, yeah. They get renumbered when they're certified, if passed.
This is not in form, I mean.
Yeah, they, they, they used to be typed, this came from the planning board, so ordinance 11, is that one in your hand? It doesn't have any, uh, heading on it. Yes, yes.
So they should be stapled together.
And, and if the council doesn't mind, Mr. Minor, uh, Minority Leader, I'd like to introduce it and refer it to committee.
Everybody concur? I guess that's it. Okay. Is there anything else we got? Anything in, wanna come out of committees or anything?
Can I just ask one question about it? Just a point of inquiry, I guess?
No, no, that's all right, forget it. You're just gonna commit it, that's fine, I can always ask you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Counselor, medical?
I got a question. This, this is for the council people.
I'll work with it.
Marcus, this one. The ARPA fund that we're, that we were approving.
Something this campaign should have had.
Rumors called from residents here wondering what type of form is, is there gonna be where people wanna do roofing or windows on their houses? Or when are we gonna come up with a plan?
It's, it's completely detached from us. It goes straight to the homeownership center. So, the way that we designed it, and Brian can talk more about this, is that we told them what we wanted to do. They came up with a program, they had, any agency around here had a chance to present a program through an RFP process. We chose the homeownership center, um, they have a proven track record. And they decide, they decide what form documentation criteria.
Has that been in place yet?
Yeah, that's been in place.
Anybody interested in applying should go on their website, unhs.org.
U, what is it?
Unhs.org.
Unhs.org, this for the people out in the audience.
And you can apply online, and they have programs for both homeowners and landlords.
And you have to.
And separate pots, there's a million dollar pot for each, a million dollars for homeowners and a million dollars for landlords.
I just, my only suggestion, but if we can get that out to the people a little more, maybe on our website or, or, or something to get it out.
We, we, we did a blast, I believe, on social media with the mayor's page, Twitter's page, Facebook. We can do it again.
I'm still getting, I'm still getting questions.
Unhs, no matter how much marketing, there's gonna be people that say, I didn't see it.
I'm tracking, but.
We did a big press conference with the check.
Yeah, I know, I was there.
You, it's you.
That's why they're calling me.
You, what did you call?
One other thing on that?
Unhs.org.
Utica Neighborhood Housing Service, UNHS.
I have it on my text. I will text, if anybody can text, if anybody. All right.
All right, any, anything else?
Just one last question on that.
You're writing it down, by the way.
Just one question.
So I'm not the only dummy.
All right, to qualify for that money, you have to be in urban renewal area, correct? And it goes by?
Not the urban renewal area, you've gotta be in a qualified census tract, which is, it's similar to the CDPG target area and similar to the U, urban renewal area, but it's, it's got its own set of boundaries.
And your in, and it's, your income level comes into play.
Qualified census tracts, you could still qualify based on income, but UNHS will walk you through all that.
So anybody in the qualified census tract qualifies?
Automatically qualifies.
People that it's income dependent outside of tract.
Correct.
Or, or seniors, right? As in income or seniors that have had a.
Go to the UNHS.
It's all a one-way.
Yeah.
I wanna clarify that.
It's the fair seniors, I don't know.
I need to.
Mr. Minority Leader, would you like to close the meeting?
Yes, okay, make a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
All right, Ace, closed. Brian.
It's 2021, it's like 7:05, about, my watch says 7:02, that clock's always messed up. Uh, I'm gonna call this meeting of the City of Utica Common Council to order. Clerk, please, or deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice, Williamson, LaMedico, DeBrango, Galimi, nine present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united at, and with liberty and justice for all.
And before we move on, I just wanted to mention, uh, someone who did just recently pass, Howard Welch, who was a councilperson for many years. He was county ledge, um, the purveyor of Welch's Bike Shop. He's done much in the community, and, um, that is why we pause for those people after the pledge, uh, because they're not just councilpeople, they're, uh, members of the community that truly, uh, do many things for many people. So Howard Welch. All right, first order of business, the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to waive reading the minutes, please, Mr. President.
We have a second from Miola. Any opposed? Okay, minutes have been dispensed. All right, um, we do have a council guest this evening, which will be invited up after the public hearing. The public hearing has no properties and/or legislation to be had, so the public hearing is now closed. So I would like to invite to the table, uh, if you'd like, Alafia Edmonds, Project Hope, Neighborhood Center. Um, you can also come up to the podium if you'd like and speak on the microphone. Thank you very much.
Hi, I know we don't have a lot of time. I'm Alafia from Project Hope. Project Hope is a statewide crisis counseling program to help New Yorkers navigate the changes caused by COVID-19. The Neighborhood Center is a local provider agency of New York Project Hope. The program is due to the Office of Mental Health and is funded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA. And we're coming to you today to tell you a little bit about our program. Project Hope has a helpline to help the community and to assist people where they're at in the community. Um, a lot of people are struggling through all the aftermath of COVID-19. Um, it's a new program. Again, it's funded by the state. We're excited, we're getting out there, we're reaching a lot of people. We still haven't gotten into, one of the reasons we are here today, we are doing such a good job with the state. They're very impressed with Oneida County. In fact, it's a New York, um, regional statewide program, and our numbers are the best. There's eight of us, six of us, um, we speak different languages. I think that's where we're standing out. Um, there's Bosnian, Arabic, uh, Burmese, Burmese, Korean, and Spanish. And because we have so much diversity with employees, we're going out, we're reaching out, we're touching people. we're reaching out, we're touching people. We're trying to appeal to the council to help us get into prisons, police department, and first responders. We're not taken away from the community. In fact, we're designed to strengthen the existing community support systems that's in place. That's one thing we're happy about. So we're just a step to navigate people where they need to be. For example, we're not clinicians, so of course we're going to make referrals to clinicians. What we're doing is we're meeting people, giving them skills. Right now, what we've done is we've gone into a couple of workshops, and we've worked with, for example, Skylar Commons. We went in, we presented our program, we had a heart-to-heart of how they felt with everything with COVID-19. We gave them some coping skills, and now we're doing workshops with them. And with the workshops, we talk about resilience, and everything is strength-based. We don't have a forum because we're not, we don't have any therapeutic way of assisting people. We help them strength-based, bring out their own natural resilience. So with that said, we have, on December 8th, we're going in to do a workshop, and we thought of Hollywood Squares because they're elderly, and they probably remember that show. And with Hollywood Squares, we're going to incorporate some coping skills, some learning techniques, but make it fun for them to have. This is a great opportunity for Oneida County because one thing that stands out is the rate of pay. I don't think we would have had a mall that closed if this program was able to stay in our county. So I could send out some more information. You can look it up, Project Hope, and that's about it. Is there any questions?
I'd like to ask, typically, we don't open it to the floor, but what I'd like to do, if the council would like, I could just go around, but I would, I'd like a motion from that, from the council, if you'd like to ask the guest speaker questions. All right. Just point of clarification, you mentioned you wanted to start broadcasting the information to the police departments, the fire departments, the first responders, et cetera. If you could please reach out to the clerk with the information you'd like, we can make sure that that's distributed appropriately, and they have the information you'd like them to have.
Yeah. Would someone like to give us some ideas that we might haven't thought of?
Could you, could I ask a question?
Well, so...
I'll make a motion if you have a question.
All right. Can you make, is there a second? All right. All right. So I'll still chair the discussion, of course, because this is a guest, it's not public comment. Yes, councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Jack. You said that our numbers are really good, that your numbers are really good, that the state is really impressed with the Oneida County. Could you just sort of drill down to that a little bit and tell us what you mean by your numbers are really good?
As far as the outreach, the people that we're informing about the program, we do need help with our helpline. We don't know why the outreach isn't meeting, why the helpline, the hotline, we like to say, isn't so hot. So we are out, and the workshop is what's saving us, because we are interacting and we are getting the information out. But we would like more coming from the hotline or helpline.
Okay.
So it's the outreach, to answer your question. We have a lot of outreach, and that's because people are letting us in and do workshops. And once we do one, we're always invited back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone willing to, like, give me an email?
Well, that's, no, we'll, we'll be with you with the clerk's email, and that'll be distributed to the full council. So if they have any ideas, questions, suggestions, or want any more information from you, they can, you know, perform that task. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Councilman Moody, can you make sure that we have the information? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next order of business this evening is public comment period. We do have people signed up. The first person is Anthony Dispirito. If you could please come forward. Thank you. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule at the podium where the signup sheet was. Are you in agreement with that? All right. Thank you. Please state your name, and you may begin.
Anthony, this is it now?
I think it's on. Yeah, yeah. Bring it down. Oh, it's definitely on, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Anthony, Anthony Dispirito, Sr. I live at 28 Nob Road, Utica, New York. I'm here tonight to bring up, I guess, what is the source subject, feral cats. And I can see council president saying, "Not again."
Ah, I'm actually, I'm interested, I'm interested to hear the new one, yeah.
We're going to go down this road again. I'm here to ask for an ordinance. The subject is ordinance. You may not feed feral animals indoors or outdoors in the City of Utica. Dictionary, "An animal in a wild state, especially after escape from captivity or domestication." If an ordinance is passed, the penalty will be as follows. First ordinance will be a warning. Second ordinance, $250 fine. Third time, $500 fine. The City of Utica Common Council requests us to pass something that has teeth that the animal control officer can use to cut the problem back. We're not going to alleviate it, I know that. Reason for the request, we have feral cats coming on our properties, lying on our patio furniture, clawing it, soiling it. We have feral cats killing mice and leaving them on our properties. We have feral cats living, leaving their excrement on our properties. We have feral cats giving birth to their kittens and sheltering them under our sheds. This is just one part of the problem. This forsake of argument, let's say where I live is Upper East Utica, and I'll give you the streets. This is the second part of the problem. We live in a semi-rural area, Pond Lane, Nob Road, Lynn Road, White Birch, Candlewick Lane, Russet Bush, Thai Place, the Hills Drive. My home, when you stand in my driveway, is 250 yards from the Herkimer County line. We're, as the crow flies. We're surrounded by forests in all directions, starting from South Park Drive and continuing to the Herkimer County Line and beyond, literally for miles and miles. The feeding of feral animals is a double-edged sword in our location, as stated above. The placing of food out to feed feral animals draws more unwanted animals to our neighborhood, such as mice, rats, fox, coyotes, possums, skunks, raccoons, and and so it's just not a feral cat problem in our area. Now, Councilman Miola has pictures of skunk that was trapped in my yard. He has pictures of video of fox in my yard, adults and babies, and several other pictures of animals roaming around the yard. Do we live with these animals 24/7? Yes, we do. But we do not need them any closer to our homes than they already are. Usually, they keep their distance, but when they are enticed by food, they are drawn much closer to our homes, and it becomes habitual problem. This is a, this is an unhealthy and unsafe situation for the residents of our area, and it needs to be addressed as soon as possible. I have called the mayor's office, and when I asked if they could do something to address this problem, I was advised they could not, because the main society will not take these cats. But when I asked if they'd get calls on this subject, they said yes. So to me, the mayor's office is admitting the City of Utica has a feral cat problem. I spoke to Mr. Williamson, Williams, the animal control officer, and he said he gets an average of two to three calls a day about feral cats. When I asked if they were tracking these numbers, he said they used to, but they stopped because it was a waste of time and resources, because nobody's doing anything about it. So let's move on to this. I've got several articles here. I'll just give you a little excerpt on each one of them. Department of Environmental Conservation, "Numerous problems arise when we feed wildlife. The intention is maybe to have a closer encounter with wildlife, to help animals in the winter, or to increase the number of available game animals. However, feeding wildlife interferes with the natural healthy balance between wildlife populations and their habitat. As wild animals are fed, they become used to the presence of people. Animals like coyotes and black bears can become a potential threat and can harm both humans and pets." Increased risk to disease. This is Department, our New York State Department of Conservation. In the wild, animals naturally disperse across the landscape. However, food promotes the concentration of animals into a small area. This increases the potential for disease to spread. Food gets contaminated with feces, saliva, urine, which easily harbors infectious disease, causing microorganisms like bacteria, viruses, pyons, or fungi. Once introduced, like chronic wasting disease that our whitetail deer have, it's difficult to eliminate, and some can be transmitted to humans. That's Environmental Conservation. American Pets, rights, mice, rats, many diseases. You can read for days on this stuff of what, of what they can carry.
At this time, I do have to, I did, I added a couple more minutes to, you did come prepared with much, you came prepared with a lot of information, so I wanted you to get through it. So if you could just summarize.
I have much more. I understand somebody recited today down at McDonald's, there's a cat house and feeding station there, okay? I guess that's been going on down there since the early 80s, when they used to make ice back there. There was a trailer park back there, and the cats were being fed. How this situation with McDonald's happened, I do not know. But what I'd like you to consider as councilpeople is, in the master plan, the harbor is supposed to be developed. Do we want feral cats running around at the harbor, at venues where children are playing, people are walking their dogs, baseball games, what have you? I don't think so. So I think you need to take a closer look at what's going on. Councilman, our councilman from North Utica, Joe, is on the right page. He was on the right page from day one, he's still on the right page. It needs to be addressed. South Utica, I know for sure, has the problem. Now, we have the problem in Upper East Utica. He has the problem in North Utica. There's a huge problem in New York City, and I think that's the way the City of Utica is headed, if we don't start to do something about it. The other thing I wanted to say is, our government, the feds, are throwing around money like a drunken sailor. No disrespect to sailors, I'm a veteran too. But there is, with this stimulus money, there could be money at the State Health Department or Oneida County Health Department. The county executive just mentioned the other day, there's money for infrastructure, for projects that were handed away. That's earmarked, we all know, everything's earmarked, okay? But I would like you to look into state health or county health to give us some help in helping the main society get funded. I talked to them, they haven't spared a moose or a cat in a year and a half, because they don't have the funding. Where this money and need to put up went, I don't know, but that's what they're telling me.
Thank you. And thank you for coming with all the information you had to present to the council. It's appreciated, especially the pictures of the hut behind McDonald's.
Councilman Miola has all, all this paperwork. So if you want to do some homework on it, he's got it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next speaker this evening, someone from long ago, he's back. Ellis Sale, if you could please come to the podium. The common council's provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Will you abide by this?
I will. I do.
State your name, and you may begin, Ellis.
Alfred LaSalle. I live in God's country, Utica, New York, over on the West Side. I see the council, having been here in five months myself, personal stuff, but I look around, and we're getting a bunch of kids to run it, you know, Mark Williamson, Frank DeBrango. You guys, it's unbelievable. Look how, how young you are, you know, I thought you had to be 21 to be on the council. How did you get on? Okay. Listen, thank you for the job you've done. You had the pandemic. We got through that, and things were tough, but our city has stayed on the straight and narrow because of you nine fellows, and I really am, I appreciate it, and I'm sincere when I say thank you. Those that'll be leaving the end of this month, double thank you. But just take a breath for a year and get back there and run again, please. That's about it for me for, for tonight. Like I said, we're getting these kids to run the council. DeBrango, look at him, chest come out, wow. Mark Williamson, you guys, help these here older people, help them out. We need all the help we can get. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The final speaker this evening is Emily Raymond. If you could please come to the podium. Thank you. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name, and you may begin.
Emily Raymond, Utica. I just wanted to say that I and several of my neighbors were here a few weeks back, and we were talking about our grievance, our problems with the warming center. And so today, I just want to express on behalf of myself and some of my neighbors who couldn't be here, although they would have liked to, our pleasure, our gratitude that the, the city, the county has taken the steps to close that center. We're already seeing a lot of relief. So thank you for doing that. And then, very briefly, I just wanted to, although Mr. Short isn't here, the DPW, if he's listening, did a nice job planting trees on our street. Trees make a difference, and hopefully, we'll be budgeted nicely next year and going forward, and have more trees in the city. Sorry, Celeste, but no chickens.
Trees.
Thank you. That closes public comment period. Next order of business, communications from the mayor. I do have a communication from the mayor. Thanks. December 1st, 2021, Mayor's Message to the Common Council. With the recent elections certified, I want to congratulate council members who won reelection and thank the council members who will be departing the council for their dedicated service to our community. There are a few updates I wanted to share with the council. This is the mayor's update from, in his words. Greenway's pickup will end on December 4th as DPW transitions into its winter operations. Yesterday, the planning board held a public hearing to review a proposed amendment to the city's zoning ordinance. The planning board reviewed the proposed amendment as the newly established zoning ordinance that was adopted by the common council on February 3rd, 2021, seemingly contradicts provisions set forth in the city code. The purpose of the review was to seek clarification, as it is the council's discretion to either adopt or reject the planning board's proposed recommendation. Lastly, the City of Utica was recently featured in Business View Magazine, a national publication. The piece entitled "Utica, New York: The City That's Making It Happen" is a great overview of the tremendous progress our community has made over the past decade. I have provided a copy of the article for each councilperson for their reference and review. That ends the mayor's message this evening. Reports from the city officers. Chief Ingersoll, would you like to begin?
Thank you. Deputy Chief Noonan?
All set. Thank you, Mike.
All set. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Phillips?
I have nothing to report, although I would encourage the two councilpeople that reached out to me about the cat shelter in North Utica to just grab me and get an update on that, because there's, since the last time I spoke to each of you, there's been more clarity, so that's all right.
Thank you. And Corporation Council?
Nothing to report.
All right. Everyone's got dinner plans. No, it's good. Thank you everyone for their attendance, it's appreciated. Let's see, communications with the mayor, reports from the city officers. Miscellaneous communications, I do have one. We have the planning board resolution, so as the mayor's message stated, there was a planning board meeting yesterday and there was also a public hearing. So there is a planning board resolution that was passed. I was asked to explain why there's no signature on this, so I will state that the actual resolution in this form was typed up today at the meeting last night. It was transcribed by the Secretary of the Planning Board, which is why as of right now the signature's not on it, but it was voted on yesterday and approved. So the planning board resolution dated November 30th, 2021, on planning board case number The resolution reads, whereas pursuant to the city of Utica zoning ordinance, the applicant is seeking a zoning text amendment in order to rescind Article 11 of the zoning ordinance entitled Supplemental Regulations Agriculture Urban. And whereas Council President Galemy and Council President Friend attended the public hearing and voiced their concerns regarding the proposed amendment. And whereas President Galemy expressed two main ideas. One, that the board should consider moving the prohibition, this is typed up a bit different, that the board should consider moving the prohibition be moved to section three rather than section two, if rescinded, and residential beekeeping, if rescinded and, this is just typed up a little bit odd, I'm going to have to ask them to clarify this and maybe, who knows, but. Two, if rescinded and residential beekeeping is banned, he would like to allow schools and commercial beekeeping operations, et cetera. And whereas councilperson Friend made the recommendation that they clean up the code and get rid of existing language prohibiting keeping foul and bees. Now therefore be it resolved, on the motion made by Mr. Mitchell, I see what they did, they typed up notes on the meeting. So their resolution is now therefore be it resolved that on a motion made by Mr. Mitchell, seconded by Mrs. Venetosi, and unanimously supported by all voting members, Mr. Colon was absent, Cologne was absent, the board be, the board voted to recommend that the council not rescind Article 11, but rather leave it as is in order to be mindful of our demographic change and to keep Utica in line with other large municipalities in New York State, and recommended that the council instead rescind Chapter 2.5, Articles 3 and 4. And that's the end of the resolution. That is miscellaneous communication from the planning board. All right. Next order of business. See if we have anything else before we move on. Do we have any cash reports? Thank you.
So the comptroller's office submitted the cash report for October 2021. Total cash balances for all city bank accounts through October 31st, 2021 totals $68.475 million received and filed.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Before petitions, remonstrations, and appeals begins, would the council like me to get through the URA properties? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Resolution one, calling for a public hearing on the sale of 126 Eagle Street to Jose Ramirez de la Cruz Hernandez for $5,000. That's the public hearing. Is there a motion? We have a motion from Meola, a second from Friend. Your votes on that resolution?
AAs adopted.
They do. Ordinance two is the sale of 126 Eagle Street to Jose Ramirez de la Cruz Hernandez for $5,000 from the URA. Is there a motion to refer to committee? We have a motion from Meola, a second from Moody. Any opposed? It's in committee. Resolution three, calling for a public hearing on 1007 Stark Street to Priscilla Alvarez Armijos for $25,000. Your votes, is there, wait, motion from Meola, second from Moody. Your votes?
AAs adopted.
Thank you very much. The sale of, the ordinance for the sale of 1007 Stark Street to Priscilla Alvarez Armijos for $25,000, is there a motion to place in committee? Motion from Meola, second from Burmaster. Any opposed, place that in committee. All right. And those public hearings were called for December 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Mr. President, as long as you're on the roll, can you do the local law?
Okay. All right. The motion to bring to the floor the introductory, the introductory local law number three. Is there a second before I read this?
Yep.
Okay. Williamson's the second. Okay. Introductory Local Law Number Three of 2021, a local law to establish sustainable energy loan program, Open Sea Pace, in the city of Utica. Before I read this, as I will not read all of the pages, has this been fully reviewed by the council at this time as much as you could in the, has it been read in caucus?
Has it been read aloud in caucus?
Has it been read, reviewed by the council?
I read it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, can you stipulate the final copy, because not the one that was sent out to the media, the copy that the council does have at this time?
Yes. And I'll ask the deputy clerk, will this be on Ecode 360 for review in its final form?
Yes.
It is now?
No, it isn't now.
Okay. So the local law that is being ready to the record will be on Ecode 360 for review tomorrow if the public for some reason needs it between now and tomorrow morning, they may contact the clerk. Thank you. Being enacted by the city of Utica, New York, the municipality as follows. Section 1, Chapter 1-2, the city of Utica Code of Local Laws is amended to here to by adding Article 5, which shall be known as the Energize New York Open Sea Pace Financing Program, and shall read as follows. Article 5, Energize New York Open Sea Pace Financing Program, 1-2-100, Legislative Findings, Intent and Purpose Authority. It is the policy of both the municipality and the state of New York to achieve energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, mitigate the effect of global climate change, and advance a clean energy economy. The municipality finds that it can fulfill this policy by providing property-assessed clean energy financing to qualified property owners as defined below for the installation of renewable energy systems and energy efficiency measures. This local law establishes a program that will allow Energy Improvement Corporation, as defined below, EIC, Local Development Corporation, acting on behalf of the municipality pursuant to the municipal agreement, to be entered into between the municipality and the EIC, to make funds available to qualified property owners that will be repaid through charges on the real properties benefited by such funds, thereby fulfilling the purposes of this local law and accomplishing an important public purpose. This local law provides a method of implementing the public expressed, policies expressed by and exercising the authority provided by Article 5L of the general municipal law. Definitions, capitalized terms may not be herein, capitalized terms used but not defined herein may have the meanings assigned in the Enabling Act, be for purposes of this local law, and unless otherwise expressed stated, or unless the context requires, the following terms shall have the meanings indicated. I'm going to go through some of these definitions as they were reviewed and read in caucus. Annual installment amount, shall have the meaning assigned in Section 1-2-107. Annual installment lien, shall have the meaning assigned Section 1-2-107, and so on. Energize New York Finance Agreement, a qualified property owner may participate in the program through the execution of a finance agreement made by and between the qualified property owner and a financing party to which EIC on behalf of the municipality shall be a third-party beneficiary of the financing agreement upon execution and delivery of the finance agreement, but the property is the subject of the finance agreement shall be deemed a benefited property. Terms and conditions of repayment, a financing agreement set forth the terms and conditions of repayment in accordance with the following. There's multiple sections summarized by the principal amount of the funds loaned by the benefited property owner of the qualified project, together with the eligible costs and financing charges approved by the EIC and by the financing party shall be specially assessed against the benefited property and will be evidenced by a benefit assessment lien recorded against the benefited property, and so on. 1-2-107, levy of annual installment amount and creation of annual installment lien upon making of the loan pursuant to the finance agreement, the secured amount shall become a special benefit assessment lien on the benefited property in favor of the municipality. The benefit assessment lien shall be reduced annually by the amount of each annual installment lien. When each annual installment lien becomes a lien, each annual installment lien shall be subordinate to all municipal liens whether created by Section 902 of the RPTL or by another state or local law. Section 1-2-108, verification and report. EIC on behalf of the municipality shall verify and report on the installation and performance of renewable energy systems and energy efficiency improvements financed by the program in such form and manner as the authority may establish. Separability, 1-2-109, if any clause, sentence, paragraph, section, or part of this local law shall be adjudged by any court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, such judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder thereof, but shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, section, or part thereof involved in the controversy in which such judgment shall be rendered. Section 2, this local law shall take effect upon filing with the Secretary of the State. There's a motion to introduce and lay this on the table, and there was a second. I would like, if there's no debate at this time, your votes to lay on the table.
Eight votes is laying on the table.
It lays on the table, the council. All right. And if there's nothing else, the council would like me to reach, before petitions, remonstrations, appeals, I will call the Second District Councilmember Robert Burmaster. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to send my condolences to Ellis for losing his wife, and if there's anything we can do or I can do, give me a call anytime. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Third District, Councilperson Friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to also extend, you know, my sadness and condolences to the Welch family. I live on Emerson Ave, and Howard Welch's house is directly behind mine, and so his Auburn Ave Bike Shop is just sort of right behind my house. So when I first bought my house, I got to know him a little bit. He was a, just a deeply kind, nice man who cared about his community, cared a lot about biking. I actually just learned that back in the seventies, he shipped his bike to Ireland and biked across Ireland wearing a T-shirt that said Welch's Bike Shop, Utica, New York. And I wish I'd known that about him in the past because that endears him to me that much more as somebody who likes to travel by bike. So he served on the council for actually 26 years, and then went over to the county ledge, and he still has a reputation in South Utica as taking calls night and day and taking calls, you know, with a glad heart. So I really appreciate that about him. I know that he will be missed by many, and he was a great member of the community, a dear, valued member of the community, and my condolences to his family. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fourth District and President Pro temp, Frank Meola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I like to just continue to add about Howard Welch. When I first started, Howard Welch was a councilman here, and we got along very good because he loved to fix bikes, and that's something I did as a childhood, I guess, business when I first started. And he got me involved in the bike giveaway that Howard Welch used to do every year at the police department. And I'm telling you, there was hundreds of bikes that Howard put together, hundreds. And we had a ton of volunteers, and Howard always had this really unusual belt that he carried, tools. And if anybody had a piece of brillo pad, it was Howard. I mean, he used that brillo pad until there's nothing left of his fingers, but that brillo pad was used to clean those wheels, and every wheel he sold before that child got that bike. There was some, there were some repairs done, and he made that bike very special for that child. And one thing I did share with him was those smiles. You can't beat that smile on that child when he handed that bike to him. And if he didn't have the bike the right size, by the end of the day, at his bike shop, he made sure that that child had a very nice bike to drive home with, around his house, and to have a good time with. Howard was a special guy, always gave, and always had his hand out to give a person a hand. He'd helped me a lot in growing here, and he'd be, he's going to be missed. He stepped the garage on a sporadic basis because a couple boo-boos with his car every now and then, and we caught up. But the times I spent with him, I cherish, and I cherish everything he taught me. And he was a great man here. All right. Mr. President, I'd like to move some legislation.
All right.
I'd like to call for the vote, ordinance number eight, amending Section 2-1827, be it ordained, or, the city ordinance hereby amended as filed, red files. All parks and playgrounds shall be open daily, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, from April 15th to November 15th, and from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, from November 15th to April 15th of each year. No persons are authorized to be in public parks except for during the hours set forth herein. The above does not include clearly illuminated areas that are being utilized in a park, such as baseball courts, such as baseball, I'm sorry, basketball courts, football fields, tennis courts, and other activities in which special use permits have been applied for and granted by the commissioner of parks. C, any person or persons found in such park or parks located in the city at times prohibited in Paragraph A therein shall be deemed a trespasser. Said persons or persons who found in parks or playgrounds after the hours set forth or in such time when lighted areas are dark shall be directed to leave said park for playground for safe concerns. If said person or persons refuse to leave or return to the park or playground after hours said therein, or the lights have been extinguished or in, without a special use permit, then said person or persons would issue summons returnable to city court. Be it further ordained, this ordinance shall take effect immediately.
Just point of order, this is the first introduction of this in its form, and it will need unanimous vote.
I'm assuming that everybody's good at this ordinance and...
Just letting you know.
Yes.
All right. Is there a second? We have a second from Lomarico. Is there any debate on the floor, any discussion?
AAs adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to, this was belabored a little bit.
We're done with that one.
We've belabored that one a little bit. Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number 11 into committee, but I'd like to read it in its final form, as we have a amended ordinance that the, you know, repeal Article 7, no, is it 6, of zoning ordinance entitled Supplemental Regulations Agriculture Urban. Whereas the new zoning law established zoning regulations for the city of Utica was adopted by the city common council on February 3rd, 2021, whereas Article 6, amended zoning entitled Supplemental Regulations Urban, contradicts the provisions set forth in Article 2-5, Article 3, and Article 4 of Utica Code. And now therefore be it ordained that the common council does hereby appeal and, is it annual? Article 6, and all, I'm sorry, and all, Article 6 of the zoning ordinance...
Article 11.
Article 11. I keep on forgetting 6. Yeah, I screwed up on that one in school. Ordinance is entitled Supplemental Regulation Agriculture Urban. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon adoption, the uses of, the use which were legal at adoption for the affirmation, net of zoning ordinances may be continued such until January 1st, 2023, after the time of such be governed by Chapter 2.5, Article 3 and 4. Refer to committee, Mr. President.
Is there a second? We have a second from Lomarico. Any opposed, place that in committee? It's in committee.
I have two more to refer to committee, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Ordinance number nine, establish reserve fund for repaving. I'd like a motion to refer it to committee.
Williamson's the second. All right. Any opposed? It's in committee.
We're going to have a finance committee at 5:00, or before our next council meeting. Mr. President, I'd like to move to committee, establish reserve fund building alterations.
Second? Second from Lomarico. Any opposed, place that in committee? All right. That's in committee.
Mr. President, I'd like to move... Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number 11, repeal zoning ordinance. I already did that one.
Yeah, you're talking about seven. You might do seven.
I did that one. I'm good. Mr. President, I thank you for your time. I did do seven, yes, I'm sorry. Ordinance, I'd like to move ordinance number seven, transfer of fund, reserve funds to committee.
Is there a second? Second from Lamedico. Any opposed, place that in committee? Thank you very much. Those three do go together.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your time.
Thank you. Fifth District Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Yes, I do want to concur that the closing of the Marwarming Center has significantly impacted. My district, even though the center was not in the fifth ward, Oneida Square is a little bit quieter these days. I contribute that to the warming center and also to the cold weather that we are experiencing. Folks are not hanging out as they would be during the summer. I tip my hat always to the Utica Police Department for their continued support there in Oneida Square, a very difficult process. They're still there, although not necessarily on the corner of Plant Street. They're moved a little bit further toward the church there or the pizza place, but they're still have a strong presence in Oneida Square, and so thank you for their support, Oneida County, and all the persons involved in having some sort of remedy for that area. Certain, now, I will say that the closing of this warming center is not the final solution. There's a lot of work still to be done with the issues of mental health, addiction in that area, and so there's a lot of work there, but this is certainly a new leaf and chapter for Oneida Square. This coming Saturday, 4 to 7, at the Parkway Rec Center, various community organizations are coming together to do a youth summit. This youth summit is going to be on the issue of gun violence, I believe, and entrepreneurship, and a few other things. And so certainly if there are any council members that want to talk to young people, hang out with some young people, understand their perspective about the city of Utica, as well as their impact of gun violence and being formidable and viable and good, Utica residents and citizens for the future, that's going to be 4 to 7 at the Parkway Rec Center in South Utica. And I also want to think...
What day was that?
Saturday.
Okay.
And Project Hope, they reached out to me. They wanted to just get exposure for their organization and their project, their hotline for mental health, and so any tool that we can just know about the nonprofit agencies that are doing good work in the area, always good to highlight them and bring them in. That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sixth District Councilperson Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say one thing also about Howard Welch. As I was a young boy, my dad passed away, and I never was very handy because I wasn't taught anything, and my bike broke, and I brought it there as a young kid, and he made me feel very welcome, fixed my bike. And as I got older and worked for Coca-Cola, I would stop there and he would buy soda and stuff from me. I never really knew him in the political world, but just my condolences to his family. Secondly, I'd like to thank Mr. DiSpirito for the work that he put in tonight. All of us know here what we've gone through in the last year and a half or so with the cats. Every one of us has a problem here. We all know that. You three guys here help me out all the time. All of us here have a problem. So I am going to be, I've talked to Marcus earlier today. I have some, he gave me a couple ideas on something, and I'm going to be moving it forward. I did visit that feeding station this afternoon. I have pictures on my phone. I have to tell you, I live in North Utica, and I do go to that McDonald's quite a bit, and I would have never known it was there. I got out of the car and went to the back of it today, and in most cases, when you, these cats see you coming, they take off. These 10 or 12 cats, this was 2 o'clock in the afternoon, sat right there and eyeballed me as they seen me taking pictures. I was actually, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you, okay? There's a note, there's a note on the... They heard about it. Yeah. There's a note on the shed saying, "Do not disturb this." I mean, you guys got to think about it. I mean, McDonald's is probably one of the busiest restaurants going there. Right parallel to the drive-through window, you have 20 or 30 cats eating out of dishes, and this, I got, whoever built this feeding station, it actually has like the plastic doors so they can go in and out, and I was very intimidated to get close to take a picture because I didn't know what was going to jump out of the tree at me. So I just, I just want to tell you, we really do need to do something. I mean, and believe me, I'm an animal lover. I don't, you know, I'm not trying to starve any animals so we can get that straight from out there, but we do have to come to a solution. We all have to, I don't want to say we all turned our backs, but I think we kind of let it go because we keep saying there is no solution. You know, when we donate $120,000, and maybe I'm wrong, to the Humane Society, and everything that we want to do, they say they can't help us. You know, then you have your certain people that want to tell you the spade neuter and release program is the right answer, which a lot of people tell me that's illegal in the state. I don't believe that that is the answer either, but I really have confidence that we will work on something and take care of it. So the last thing I want to say is on Sunday, December 12th, the North Utica Senior Center will be holding a pancake breakfast, and I welcome everybody to come there. Santa Claus is going to be there. Actually, one of our good fellow friends is the Santa Claus. He's not here tonight, but my legislator friend, it will be Santa Claus. So please, you know, he's dressing up as the elves and stuff like that because we need multiple Santas. The real Santa Claus will be busy. So we'll have him there. So you guys, thank you.
So to be clear, it's one of Santa's helpers.
It's one of Santa's helpers, yes.
Okay, just want to be clear for those who might be watching the YouTube channel that it's one of Santa's, hey, no, let's, let's move on, but it is, he's referring to one of Santa's helpers. Thank you, thank you.
So that's all I have tonight, Mr. President. Thanks so much.
All right. Council, Councilman Mark Williamson and Minority Leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Same with Howard Welch. I didn't really know him that well, but he left a legacy, and that's important for any person that's on this earth, to leave a legacy and do the right thing. He'll be remembered, and rest in peace, Howard. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council-at-large and ENA Board Member, Jacob Lamedico, you have the floor.
Well, they just dropped these on me, so I guess I got to read them.
There you go. That's why I said ENA Board Member, right? Yeah, tulip, tulip.
I was just going to pass the mic real quick.
No, no.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
All right. I have a transfer of funds for 2021 fiscal year engineering contractual. All right, whereas local law number two of 2007 requires, among other things, that each transfer and appropriation from one account exceeding $15,000 within a budgetary year shall be set forth specifically in an ordinance and shall not become effective unless said appropriation and transfer is approved by a majority of all council members. And whereas the Board of Estimate and Apportionment did approve the particular transfer hereafter more particularly described on November 9th, 2021, now therefore be it ordained that the city controllers hereby authorize and direct it to make the following transfer of funds. It'd be off-street parking wages and engineering contractual, $70,000 apiece, to adjusted for Dig Safely Services. And that's it.
Your votes? Oh, second, second. We got multiple people's hands up. Sorry, that's why I was just saying, go for it. Miola, we'll call it Miola.
And I have proposed ordinance number six.
Okay.
Transfer of funds, 2021, 2022 fiscal year parks seasonal employment. Whereas local law number two of 2007 requires, among other things, that each transfer and appropriation from one account exceeds $15,000 within a budgetary year shall be set forth specifically in an ordinance and shall not become effective unless said appropriation and transfer is approved by a majority of all council members. And whereas the Board of Estimates and Apportionment did approve the particular transfer hereafter more particularly described on November 19th, 2021, now therefore be it ordained that the city controllers hereby authorize and direct it to make the following transfer of funds. Park wages and seasonal employment, $80,000, to adjusted for seasonal help necessary to assist in parks. Thank you.
Second from Miola, your votes.
Excuse me, I'd like to make a change on that, by the way. It was, thank you, Frank. It was 40 for wages going to seasonal employment.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council-at-large, Frank Brango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo the sentiments of Howard Welch there. I, he was a true gentleman. Remember him years ago? He had 25-plus years in public service. He was a, no one really had a bad word to say about the gentleman, so I send my condolences to his family. One thing I want to mention, I know City Hall sent out an email regarding booster shots, or actually even if you're first shot. They are going to be holding the COVID shots here on 12/6, which is Monday. You can go on the website, New York State Department of Health, COVID, and look for the COVID tested site. It'll be right here at City Hall, right here in the chambers, from what I understand. So you can sign up and if someone needs a booster or they're getting it for the first time, this is the place to come. Also, Delvin, I know you mentioned 4 to 7 Saturday at the Parkway. I look forward. I'm going to stop by and just get some feedback from all the youth out there, so that'd be great. All right, that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have nothing further, so if anyone would like to make a motion. All right, second? Lamedico's the second. Have a good evening.